Okay, good morning, everyone. Bonjour tout le monde. Bienvenue. Thank you so much for being here this morning. I suspect some folks are absent this morning because they had a wonderful time last night and are still reeling from the wonder of it all. So I hope you all had a lovely time last night. Thought it was a great venue. Yeah, thanks, Adrienne, for it. Was that a thumbs up, Adrienne? Yes? Awesome. Thank you. Good. So, good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here for the CAR special session called Spotlight on the Atlantic Region: Challenges and Opportunities for HIV Research. My name is Jackie Gehagan. I'm the Associate Vice President of Research at Mount St. Vincent University here in beautiful Mi'gmaqy. And I'm very pleased to serve as today's moderator for this session. Really excited about this session. We pitched this idea and we're thrilled that it was received favorably by, well, by everybody. And it's really important, as you heard Lisa Barrett allude to, and you've since the opening heard lots of people talk about the unique challenges that we face in the Atlantic region. And so this is an opportunity to sort of unpack what those challenges look like from our presenter's perspective. So we have six experts, presenters with us today, to offer very brief overviews of the challenges and opportunities of HIV research in the Atlantic region from their own unique perspectives. Now each, this is the challenge. Each speaker has seven minutes, plus or minus. And so, given the short time together, what I'm going to do is read brief bios at the start. You can find the full bios of all of our presenters in the program, and I would encourage you to refer to that. But brief bios will be offered by me, and then I would ask each speaker to, if you wish, come to the podium. If not, you've got a microphone in front of you, and then off you go. People know the order of speakers? Good. Yes, good. And that we'll take questions at the end. So if you could please hold your questions until you've heard from all of our speakers, that would be fantastic. We are going to be starting with Shamera, I'm gonna not do this right. I practiced this, Bedo Bozo, sweet, who is a provincial epidemiologist for Prince Edward Island, where she provides leadership on public health, data surveillance, and research. She is also an adjunct faculty member at Dalhousie University, and with over 15 years in applied research and 10 years in evidence-informed public health policies, she specializes in health equity and disease prevention and community-engaged research on HIV and Black Health in Canada. She advises on health equity measurement and data collection to address health inequities and to monitor progress. Next, we'll hear from Dr. Lisa Barrett. Lisa Barrett is an Assistant Professor in the Department of Microbiology and Immunology, as well as in the Department of Medicine, Faculty of Medicine at Dalhousie University. Lisa earned her bachelor's degree, a medical degree, and PhD at Memorial University of Newfoundland. She's completed fellowships at Dalhousie University, the University of Toronto, and the National Institutes of Allergy and Infectious Diseases. Some of Dr. Barrett's research interests include HCV treatment for vulnerable populations, the role of chronic viral infection in aging, and the immune response. Following Lisa, we will hear from Dr. Debbie Kelly, who is the pharmacist with the provincial HIV program in Newfoundland and Labrador, and she is also a professor in the School of Pharmacy in the Faculty of Medicine at Memorial University. After Debbie, we'll hear from Michael Davis Cole, who is with Heal Nova Scotia and is their Equity, Diversity, Inclusion Project Manager. Michael, they/them, comes from a large family that holds its roots deep within the Nova Scotia Black and First Nations communities, and being Indigenous and Two-Spirit Black Nova Scotian has been the driving force for Michael's work with queer First Nations and Nova Scotia Black communities. And then next, we'll hear from Gerard Yetman, who is the Executive Director of the AIDS Committee of Newfoundland and Labrador. Gerard is one of the founding members of the Newfoundland and Labrador AIDS Committee, also known as ACNL, and serves as the Executive Director of ACNL and the Tommy Sexton Center. Gerard has served on provincial, regional, national boards of directors of aid service organizations, and is presently the Chair of Action Hepatitis Canada and co-chair of the Atlantic Interdisciplinary Research Network. Gerard has worked in the field of HIV and AIDS for some 33 years. Wow. And finally, we'll hear from Marina Klein, who is a National Director of CTN+. Dr. Klein is a professor of medicine at McGill University in the Division of Infectious Diseases Chronic Viral Illnesses Service, trained in medicine, infectious diseases, epidemiology, and biostatistics. She is an internationally recognized expert in HIV and hepatitis C observational research and clinical trials. So with that, over to you, Shamera.
All right, welcome, everyone. So I see my role on this panel as a representative of the Government of PEI, as being someone who provides a government perspective and helps to set the stage for my colleagues here who will speak from their perspectives. And so I'll start talking about HIV information for Atlantic Canada, oh, sorry, surveillance information for Atlantic Canada, responses from governments, and then how this impacts research and research opportunities. So first and foremost, from a government perspective, it's important to note that HIV infection is a national-notifiable condition in Canada. And while national notification is voluntary, notification to provincial public health authorities of all newly diagnosed cases is required by law in all four Atlantic provinces, so PEI, Nova Scotia, New Brunswick, and Newfoundland and Labrador. As a nationally notifiable condition, that means that there is good information about incidence and prevalence, so the counts, at a national level, though there are limitations to the data. Canada's National HIV Surveillance System collects routine surveillance data on first-time diagnoses, and the dataset consists of age, sex, race, or ethnicity, when available, and exposure categories. There are differences in the types of data that are available in different jurisdictions, and so there are gaps in the data that's, and there are some inconsistencies in the data that the federal government receives. So given this context, what does HIV surveillance data say about the current situation in Atlantic Canada when it comes to new diagnoses? So based on the new, most recent data that is publicly available, Atlantic Canada had the second lowest rate of new diagnoses in 2023, so 2.4 cases per 100,000 people. And in 2023, the national rate was 6.1 cases per 100,000 people. And keep in mind that these rates do not include cases that were previously diagnosed outside of Canada. More detailed information for 2023 is not available yet, but I know that, I was able to review an advanced copy of that report, so I know it's forthcoming. But what we do know from the more detailed information from 2022 is that in Atlantic Canada, the 2.1 cases per 100,000 translated to 40 new HIV diagnoses in Atlantic Canada. And so in 2022, there were 40 new cases. And so what is the current situation in terms of prevalence? So based on data from 2022, there were 1,601 people living with HIV in Atlantic Canada. And of note, even though the federal data is quite limited in terms of the details that are provided, the provinces tend to have a lot more information, but due to small, due to small sizes, small population sizes, small case counts, this information is usually not provided. It's not released publicly. Case in point, for PEI, from 2018 to 2023, we diagnose between three to eight cases of HIV per year. And so when we do release the information, we release counts with no other characteristics. And further, within our context, in order to produce valid estimates, we have to aggregate by years. So for example, we use a five-year moving average in PEI, and we've recently started doing that. Or we aggregate by region, so you'll see in the national reports that it's Atlantic region, and it's not broken out by individual provinces. And even when we do the estimates for 95, 95, 95 target, you'll see that PEI and New Brunswick are combined. So even then, we're not providing individual provincial-level information. And so this means that the surveillance information that we have has less granularity. What we release has less granularity, but through collaboration with provincial public health, there is a possibility of getting, of accessing more detailed information and combining that information over years. And so governments are very much focused on, I really do privilege responding over kind of monitoring and understanding, monitoring the situation. So within Canada, there has been a shift towards action plans that have focused on STBBI more broadly. So back in 2018, Government of Canada released a five-year action plan for sexually transmitted and bloodborne infections. And as a result, provinces have also released their individual action plans. So the Government of, the Government of Canada's action plan focused on reducing the incidence of STBBI in Canada, improving access to testing, treatment, and ongoing care and support, and reducing stigma and discrimination that create vulnerabilities to STBBI. And related to those goals, in the federal action plan, provinces have created action plans, as I mentioned. For example, in PEI, our action plan focuses on educating those at risk of acquiring STBBI and those who provide care to that population, providing easy accesses, access to resources that minimize the risk of acquiring STBBI, minimizing barriers to accessing testing, care, and treatment, and reducing stigma and discrimination that create vulnerabilities. Governments are also using the 95, 95, 95 target to gauge progress. In Atlantic Canada, we're doing quite well overall in reaching the targets in 2022. For the most recent year, the estimates that we have are 87% to 95% of those who are infected being diagnosed, 88% to 99% of those who are diagnosed being on treatment, and 93% to 98% viral, having viral suppression. The prevalence of HIV PrEP use has also been increasing in the region since 2014, but remains quite low, so it's below 0.1%. In 2022, the prevalence of PrEP use in each province was 0.032% for New Brunswick, 0.026% for Newfoundland and Labrador, 0.048% in Nova Scotia, and it was highest in PEI, where it was 0.064%. And we have the benefit of having a smaller population, and public health is centralized in Prince Edward Island. There is one provincial public health office, there is one provincial health region. And we know that PEP is also available at Atlantic Canada, but its use, the prevalence of PEP use remains incredibly low. So what does this all mean for research? So there's a breadth, there's breadth in our surveillance data in terms of population coverage, but little depth. So we're limited in our understanding of HIV in Atlantic Canada if we rely on routinely collected surveillance data. As such, research adds essential depth to our understanding of the epidemiology of HIV in the region and within key populations disproportionately impacted by HIV. Our case counts are quite low, which impacts on the types of questions we can answer for the region and the methodological approaches that are available to us. By combining years of data and/or combining data from multiple provinces, we open additional options. And respondent burden is an important consideration when conducting research in Atlantic Canada, and the usefulness and applicability of research can be enhanced by aligning research with strategic priorities for government at the federal, provincial, territorial, and municipal levels. And as I mentioned earlier, being able to collaborate with governments will provide, can provide deeper access to data. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for being here, and thank you for starting off that way and thinking about Atlantic Canada, HIV, HCV, and STIs from a population and government perspective. I think that's a great lens to start with. My lenses come from experience in both clinical and discovery or basic science research in three, three of the four Atlantic provinces: Newfoundland, Prince Edward Island, and Nova Scotia. So I have, what did you say, little depth but lots of breadth in a couple of different types of research. I'm gonna make three points around what I think are opportunities and good things that can happen in the Atlantic region around research specifically. And then the fourth, I'm going to focus on maybe what could be perceived as threats. And the overall take-home message, I'll give you a spoiler from the Lisa Barrett approach to what we, I think about Atlantic Canada from a research perspective, is, oof, it's hard and not really well done at the moment in this domain, but boy, do I see lots of opportunity. So that's the spoiler alert. So I will take a page from Dr. Logi's talk yesterday, when they were doing a really, really interesting panel on sex and gender in research. And she had said, you know, as much as we talk about the challenges, we should really think about some of the things that build resilience within our communities and ourselves and our research as well. Ask about the good things, too. And I sat and I thought about that for a moment, and I said, you know, we do have strengths in Atlantic Canada. Since I've come back in 2013 from traipsing around doing training till I was a billion years old, I've been saying, we have a living lab. Atlantic Canada is a living lab in many ways. And that used to be around collecting quantitative data, but I think as we've expanded what we consider to be research, thankfully, into more diverse types of research and qualitative research and recognizing the value of that, we can come at this from the perspective that this is a living lab. And I will make a little asterisk here. Atlantic Canada is not one place, and it is, boy, is it different from province to province. And we are all very different provinces with different populations and different aspects of rural to urban, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, many different populations and peoples. So careful with the Atlantic idea, I think, but we do have that strength of, as I think was mentioned, you know, we do have quantitatively what are considered to be low numbers, A, each number and each person that that's associated with as a person living with an experience and infection is important and, and a process in their life. But also, we've started to discover nationally, internationally, that N of 1, N of 5, low number quantitatively researched situations can offer a very cool and interesting perspective in personalized medicine as well. And I think that can come to when we talk about delivering care, and I know Dr. Kelly is gonna talk about access to care. I think that there is something very special about understanding in places that have what I would call not low numbers, because I think one is too many when we're talking about HIV, Hep C, or many of these infections these days, lower numbers of people living with a certain infection. I also think that offers a very exquisite opportunity to define very specific personalized approaches to making care appropriate for a person, and that is a research opportunity. So I think that's an opportunity in personalized medicine of a different kind, that's not genes and the like, it's real world, real life. The other thing I'd say is that, related to this delivery of care, we've traditionally, in research, thought of that as systems, delivery of care as systems. And I think, again, I'll reiterate, that we're coming into a space and place where delivery of care may, and I hope, I hope, is becoming more of a situation where we think about autonomy and personhood, and that person can engage in the type of care that they want. Does that happen in Atlantic Canada right now? Hmm, not a lot, although some of our community organizations are making great strides in both advocating for and delivering some of those types of work, but it's a bit of a gap. So the third thing I'd like to comment on is flexibility and the recognition of different types of research. I alluded to it in the beginning. But when I sort of started in research, there were the basic scientists doing their quantitative stuff, there were people who did clinical trials, and they were experts, and those were the valid types of research. And this is not just true in Atlantic Canada, but now we're starting to come into an age, a world where research and evaluation and descriptors of different types of research have now become not just fringe, I think, but very, very valuable parts of how we develop research. Are we doing a lot of that in Atlantic Canada? Not yet, and I do think that part of that is, that we, the threat part, which is my last comment around scarcity of resources, that becomes a challenge. Really difficult for people who have way more commitments on care, commitments on delivery of service, to look up, look out, think, and need and want to do research. They see what the question is, they wanna ask the questions and do research, but it's a bit of a scarcity. So flexibility and recognition that other types of research are important, but also that you need to have some tools in place around data collection. And I think those bits of information with government are going to have to not just be a nice-to-have, but a need-to-have. I think some of the, not just in Atlantic Canada, but it hasn't been great, I won't lie. It's not an easy thing to build those kind of bridges, when, especially when people start to get this idea of privacy and separation of church and state, if you will. If we keep carrying on and saying that those have to be in place, and that every single person wants the same level of privacy, or that they want the same level of consent, we're gonna have trouble. So I, to frame that as a possibility, maybe that's possible that we can start thinking about that and asking people what they want. Threats. I've got six hot seconds to tell you about what I think are the threats. One, scarcity of resources. When people can't look up and look out, we've got a problem. And that's partially a legislation and policy issue as well. Nova Scotia, for example, has just introduced Bill 12, passed it very, very quickly through, which increases government, I'll call it interference, but government presence in publicly-funded university and linking research priorities to economic outcomes. That's a problem. And it's starting in other provinces, so I'll just name that one out. Lovely place, Nova Scotia, beautiful place, nice waterfront, but be aware of things like Bill 12. And then at the level of policy, there's also this idea, Nova Scotia Health Authority, I don't know if people know this, but they still require written consent to do an HIV test in 2024. So scarcity of resources, policy at government levels and at your organizational levels are gonna limit research, and we need to stop and think about those. But living lab possibilities, it's there.
It's always tough to come after Dr. Barrett, isn't it? So I'm gonna share a few thoughts, I guess less so from my researcher hat, though I'll speak to a little bit, a little bit about the research that we've done, but more so from what I see in the clinic and the patients and the people trying to access services throughout Newfoundland and Labrador. So spoiler alert, we have challenges with access to care. I bet nobody else struggles with that. But as it relates to testing and prevention services in particular, and, you know, I think we do a reasonable job with treating HIV for people who manage to get connected and get to that, that place in our province, and largely it's because it's a provincial program and, and it works quite well, and we've got, you know, team members that go above and beyond. But how do you get to that point? You have to get connected into the system. And I just wanna talk about a couple of other infections for a moment. Hepatitis C, so we, we don't have, you know, numerically a lot of HIV in our province relative to, to other provinces in Canada, but hepatitis C, we are above the national average in terms of prevalence. Syphilis, I recently attended a webinar where I learned that in the first four months of 2025, we exceeded the total number of cases we saw last year in syphilis, primarily in the Labrador region of the province. And I think it's important, you know, I think we need to be mindful about respecting smallish numbers and, and privacy along with that, but it's also really important to recognize where we've got pockets of problems. And, you know, one of the challenges is that we are a very geographically diverse, diffusely distributed population. And when decisions about resource allocations are made, they're oftentimes made on the basis of quantitative data. And it doesn't take into account the challenges that, that we face and the resources that are required to overcome some of that. So I think that that's, that's really important. Another challenge is that most of our testing services tend to be located in urban regions. They tend to be hospital or clinic-based, which again, are fine for some people, but are, is not okay for a lot of people. You know, there's really, we have very few, if any, community-based, like true community-based testing sites. And when I come to conferences like this and I hear about the amazing work that comes from, you know, outreach from community partners, you know, in provinces like Ontario and Quebec and B.C., I sit there with envy because we just don't have that, because the resources are not there to, to support it. When it comes to prevention, we heard a little bit about our PrEP numbers. They're low. We've got a problem with access to prescribers for HIV PrEP in our province. And when it comes to PEP, post-exposure prophylaxis, that's a bit of a disaster. Even if people know that PEP exists and they try to access it, whether it's from their family doctor, or maybe they go to a merge or they call, you know, the health line, they're either directed to the emergency department where they might sit for eight hours or 12 hours waiting to be assessed. They might be given a starter kit of five-day supply without a prescription for continuing, and then the instructions about where to get that prescription filled are oftentimes, not always, but oftentimes misconstrued. And the other problem we have with PEP in our province is that it's only covered if it's dispensed through the hospital pharmacy in St. John's. So if you happen to present outside of St. John's, number one, you may or may not get a five-day starter kit for PEP. And if you don't get your prescription through the Health Sciences Pharmacy in St. John's, you'll be asked to pay for it. So we've got a lot of issues with, with disparity and just a system that is very broken around prevention. So I think what we need are really to start thinking about innovative ways to engage people. Our system is developed around, we deliver services based on clinician models of care. Where is the clinician that provides this service in a small province? And therefore, we should expect the people to go to them. And if you ask sometimes, you know, health services or the government, do services exist for testing or prevention? They do on paper, but I would respectfully argue that a service does not exist if people cannot access it. And so we need to stop thinking about clinician-centric service delivery and thinking about bringing services to where the people are. And when I say where the people are, that may be where they're physically located, or it may be where they choose to go because that's what's safe or acceptable to them. Now I will say, I'm feeling quite encouraged. Our province has embarked on two strategies. We've had an STBBI consultation day back in November that, you know, is moving a little bit more slowly than other strategies, but the engagement is there. It's rekindled for the first time since before COVID, and there was a lot of community consultation, and I think some really good ideas went forward. So I remain cautiously optimistic that we'll see some improvements on that front. And we recently just submitted a draft of a hepatitis elimination, hepatitis C elimination strategy to the chief medical officer, and that had great involvement from community, researchers, clinicians, and so forth. What really encourages me about that strategy is the focus on bringing services to the people where they're at. There was a lot of discussion around the needs and corrections and the opportunities and corrections, and we saw that make it into the draft strategy. We saw lots of discussion around bringing services through a community-delivered lens, both for testing, as well as prevention, and for treatment. So there, you know, we have champions in our province saying, you know, we should be looking at increasing scope and increasing, you know, nurse and pharmacist-delivered testing and treatment in community. You've heard some, some really great presentations from some of my colleagues. I'll give a shout out to Tashia Ramsey, talking about the pharmacy prescribing for PrEP, about pharmacy testing. And, you know, I think we need to pay attention, for me, yeah, those are great models of care, but one of the really important data points that came out of that, for me, in participating in that project, the people who got tested for syphilis, over 60% of them, it was their first syphilis test. Hepatitis C, for 50%, it was their first test. Like where, where are we falling apart that people are only able to access testing through research studies? This is, this is, we've gotta move from research projects to translating evidence into changing our systems. So I think we have ample evidence. I think we have ample evidence of a variety of different models of care that can work. Now we need to be loud, and we need to make sure that they get incorporated into our strategies, and that those strategies get funded, and that we evaluate the impact of those strategies, so that the things that we do well continue to get funded and can get expanded and scaled and sustained, and the things perhaps that aren't working so well, we pay attention to, and we tweak, and we listen to the voices of the people who are trying to access and use those services to inform those changes. So I think it can be done. I think we have to think outside of the box. We have to work with community and listen to the people that are trying to access services as we move from these clinician-centric models of care towards a true person-centered model of care.
And you can give me a time check, too, if I go over. Hello. In my bio, I don't list any of
In my bio, I don't list any of my things that I do attached to medical and that. I do that for a reason because a lot of people devalue that when they see my color and it's sort of like, oh, you're the exclusive hire. And that kind of goes into how healthcare works here for, I'm Indigenous, I'm Yggma, and I am Black Nova Scotian. And I'm also living with HIV. And Heal Nova Scotia was AIDS Coalition for those folks that, we just rebranded. And so now I'm seeing from both sides of the fence. And what I've discovered, like everything you said, spot on, all the speakers so far, like the numbers, my background is in medical research. And it irritates me when I hear, oh, your numbers are too low, so we're not looking at it. Numbers will always be low. They're not going to change. So you need to change your values. You need to come down and do qualitative research. You need to do research that will pick up my people, the people that are being left behind, the fact that HIV is climbing in numbers in women. But these are things that have always been left behind. When I hear numbers of like, we had this many out here, and I'm thinking, man, I know personally, five people, and they're not the same people you're talking about. You're not, they're not being picked up because we don't feel comfortable going to the services because it's not there for us. We don't see ourselves there. And just personal experience, going to the merge and having them want me to discuss my HIV status in the waiting room that was full, these things happen, and it's supposedly okay for my demographic for it to happen. And then when you say that, then we're like, okay, pull this back. How do we do research? How do we pick up everybody? One of the pivotal things that was said here earlier is go to people because it's much more comfortable to go into the Black communities, to go into the Indigenous communities, to go to women's centers and have those conversations where it's a safe space. Because the one thing in research that is sometimes forgotten is when you get so far down into that research rabbit hole, and I've gone there, bad talk, bad, you forget that the comfortability needs to be on the other side of the table, not on your side. It needs to be with the person that you're trying to get the information from. And at some point, it turns into that person on the other side of the table is going to be, I'm no longer comfortable with this because now it's, it's getting problematic. I can't speak for how I really feel. I'm saying it over and over and over and over again, and I don't think you're hearing me. I don't know how many times I was asked if I ever did use needles. I've never used needles in my life, other than the ones that medical have done to me. So those things, there's a lot of things that get pulled out that are systemic, and they get addressed to certain demographics of people. And then there's things that are forgotten. I'm trans, but I'm female-bodied, so they chose at the hospital not to talk about any of my female body parts. And so I know that one of the things that we tried to do so well, that was ironic, in Nova, in the Maritimes and in Canada, is to be politically correct. It's okay, but the thing is, we do it too far. We're like, oh, you're treasure, they, them. So in that population, we're going to just forget whatever, that's, we don't see a female body, we're just going to go this way. Ask the people. In research, make sure that you pull that information in. I've, a lot of our paperwork, I have had to redo, and this comes from federal grant funding, I've had to redo and say, put those questions in because you need to ask this information so that you are actually understanding the person as a whole, not just seeing them as a research number. Because when you do that, then your variables switch and you can get those, oh, they're doing good in the Atlantic provinces because it's a low number because we're not picking up trans females because we've never asked the question. Are we pick, like, like I know one grant that has to redo their entire grant because they miss transgender people. Because they didn't want to ask that question because they felt it was, they're being politically correct about it. The missing numbers and how, look at my nose, and how research looks at them, I think we have some phenomenal talent in this province, in the Atlantic provinces. We have the people to do the work. It's just convincing the government to do the work. And one thing I want to point out is, and not slamming, but I am slamming, it's problematic to have this talk session at the very end of the thing where a lot of people flew out this morning. But that's exactly how I feel when I saw it, that's how healthcare sees us. That's how the government sees us. And it's like, mm. And so we need to change that. I think somebody said, come out, be loud, whatever. We need to change that. We need to speak up. And that needs to be everybody together because I'm telling you, when my people speak up, we just get listed as angry and loud and, and the problem in the room. So we need to come out and we need to get that from, this, I'm being the patient, we need to get it from the medical side. We need to get it from the people that are already there that are holding all the large number degrees, and they need to be loud and say, these are the people I'm looking after. They need to be recognized, and this needs to come out. Allyship is wonderful when it's used properly. And that's what we need to see. We need to see that kind of push because then we can build up trust. And then the, I know five people living with HIV that were Atlantic provinces that left the province as soon as they found out. And I actually know more, but I'm thinking about these five. And the reason I'm thinking of these five is from all of them, the statement was, I won't be seen here properly. I will be judged. I will be this. Two are Indigenous, three are Black. The fastest ones out of the province were the Black people because the Indigenous ones could, were kind of passing. And it was like, no, no, if I go, and after now going what I went through with public health, I totally get it. Like questions that I were asked were kind of horrific. The things that were said to me in emergency rooms were horrific. And I'm like, this is, we can't do this. But that will only change from, and I'm speaking to everybody in medical, your side of the fence. Because they're not listening to the patients. We're just being listed as, here's our numbers, and we keep going and like, next. That push needs to come back because I love, it was very lucky, I lucked into some fantastic and wonderful medical people to help me. One's at the table. And so therefore, I did get that. I had several doctors in the merge champion me and go at every, the other ones that were kind of pushing it. That's what we need to see for trust. Because I wasn't trusting anybody. I went a little crazy on a few people. That's what we need to see for trust because you're not going to see those numbers. You're talking, but we want to get a robust understanding of our provinces. Well, you need to come together as a province. We can't do this one, 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 do the, like the feminist first two and three wave and pick up everybody at the end. We need to do it together, and we need to be loud about it. Thank you.
I'm going to rather, I think we've got a good identification of all the challenges. I, I would kind of like to focus on some of the successes that we have seen over the last five to 10 years. As Jackie mentioned, I'm the, the co-chair, the community co-chair for, for ARIN, which is the Atlantic Interdisciplinary Research Network. ARIN was established in 2005, and it consists of approximately about 40 individuals, including researchers, community organizations, people with lived experience, and government. ARIN meets on a monthly basis where we update each other on ongoing research within the Atlantic region, and we identify and discuss ongoing challenges in testing, treatment, and support for STBBIs in Atlantic Canada. Now, while national research is really important, and it's very important for community development, community planning, program planning, however, what we have found is national research really do not address the unique challenges that we have in Atlantic Canada, as my co-presenters have already, have spoken about. One of the things I, I really question numbers, and really I question numbers because, as Debbie alluded to, access to testing is deplorable in Atlantic Canada. So from 2017 to 2024, ARIN with limited resources, we did community-based research on access to testing in Atlantic Canada and provided an opportunity for the community and researchers to sit down with the medical officers of health from the four Atlantic provinces to begin discussions on how are we going to change access to testing. Without testing, we can't get people to treatment. Then we look, I really need to look at the fact that the Atlantic research really identifies where community-based organizations need to do the program planning to address the real issues. As well, we also need identification of those unique issues so that we can do proper advocacy for change and policy development. When I look at a couple of opportunities that we've had over the last few years, looking at the APPROACH study, where Debbie was a part of ARIN and a part of the, the whole landscape review of access to testing, the, and, and having, and having the opportunity as a community-based organization to be fully immersed in, in Debbie's work, it, it's really important that we have the evidence that, that Debbie discovered in that, that pharmacy, pharmacy was determined to be one of the most accessible places in Atlantic Canada for people to be tested. It addressed urban and, and the rural issues that we are still dealing with, and hopefully as we move forward in the implementation strategy, that this will become a reality for Atlantic Canada. Also, what's very important was having that evidence-based research in Atlantic Canada was, in, actually provides the, the evidence that the community needs to start advocating to government for change, change in policy, change in behavior, change in attitude. And just looking at the results of the APPROACH study and how we were able to look at, at that evidence-based research in the development of the HCV elimination strategy in the province, and as Debbie mentioned, as we move forward to develop the sexual health strategy in the province. Another, another very important study that was conducted by Dr. Lois Jackson, also a former member of, of ARIN, now happily retired, I hope, was the COAST study. The COAST study was a three-year study that looked at the successes and the challenges of drug rehab programs in Atlantic Canada. That was a very important, that, that came out of the discussions in ARIN and their frustration for community workers, where people were failing or failing to be successful in the structure of rehab programs in Atlantic Canada. 26-day programs certainly does not help. The policies and procedures that were in, in a lot of these programs actually prohibited people from successfully even getting through to 26 days. What it was very important was the results of Lois's study, where it was done over a three-year period. After each phase, we were able to, community was able to take those findings and begin the discussions with rehab programs and also with the Minister of Mental Health and Addictions. I know for, for us in Newfoundland, we were successful in making sure that some of these policies were changed. For example, you can now smoke when you're in a rehab program, which you would, prior to, to these negotiations, you would be dismissed from programs if you were caught smoking. I think people have a lot more issues than smoking when they're in programs. So I think it's, it's very important, well, like, just to repeat myself, I know the importance of national, of national research is very important, but when I have to go and do advocacy at provincial level, national research don't always identify, or policymakers can't relate to it because it's not research based on the community in which I'm trying to advocate for change. So why I wanted to, to really focus on the successes is that it's going to be very important if we're going to move forward and we're going to make an impact on community, the development of community programs, the change in policy to make these programs operate, we need more funding for community-based research and research in general in Atlantic Canada so we can address the very unique needs.
So I get the privilege of being last and also the only member of this panel who's actually not based in Atlantic Canada, though I did do my undergrad here many, many years ago, and at the Mount and Al. And I'm always so privileged to come back and spend time here because there's a dear place in my heart that the Maritimes holds. So I'm here representing as the National Director of CTN Plus. And I'll just want to give you a brief update about what's been happening there and how this really hopefully can help be an opportunity to address so many of the issues that were raised by my panel colleagues today. So CTN, as you probably know, is a, is a network that's been around for many years, from 30 years actually, addressing, it was born out of the need to address the emerging HIV epidemic in the 80s and early 90s. And really, at the onset, was focused out about getting access to treatment for people living with and affected by HIV. And it grew into a network that really encompassed a large number of research areas and provided training and capacity building to, to much of Canadian researchers. And many people who've been trained through this program are now still in HIV research in Canada. So our postdoctoral fellowship program has been one of the flagships and really has a high retention rate. I myself was a postdoctoral fellow, actually. But in recognition of the real changes in the epidemiology of HIV and the growing importance of a wide range of STBBIs in this country, in 2024, CIHR put out a call for a new vision, a new pan-Canadian network with a much broader and expanded mandate and asked for a new structure. And I think this new structure is one that is why I'm here now to speak, is because it's moving from a very centralized structure that was based in, in Vancouver to a decentralized model with, at its core, regional teams. And these regional teams are really envisioned to help address these regional disparities that we've been hearing about today and to make us much more reactive to regional realities and priorities and needs in designing and conducting our research and building our capacity for research in this country. At the same time, we're being asked also to address a broader range of HIV and STBBIs, from HIV to a broader range of STBBIs, to really enhance our capacity to engage community in all aspects of research, from the conception of the idea and the protocol right through to the implementation and the translation of those results, and also to be there for pandemic preparedness. So no small ask for the network that actually has exactly the same amount of funding as it previously did. Not to say that that's not a small amount of funding. It really is where one of the biggest investments that Canada makes in HIV research in this country. So we, this was a challenge for us, I think, when we first saw this call, and, but we also recognized very quickly that was an opportunity to address gaps. A lot of the gaps about how community, methodologists have been involved far too late in the planning of research so that the studies that have been designed and carried out have been often too small or too, of too low impact or don't actually address needs of people who are living with HIV and STBBIs. And also this not engaging researchers from across the country. We had very high concentration of, of researchers in the three big provinces, in the three big urban centers. And this is particularly true with the Atlantic region and the prairies, where we have not been able to really effectively address growing and regional differences in those places and the need to build capacity. and the need to build capacity. I think the other thing I, I always talked about when putting the new network together is how we have to conceive of research as, as a part of care. And I think some of that came out in many of the talks today, research and testing, I guess, as, as part of care and testing. And not to be able to participate in a trial may mean you don't have access to a treatment or a test or something early when it's there, the benefit that could potentially come from that. And unfortunately, in this country where we don't invest often in a lot of public health strategies, the only way you may access that is through research. And if we're having regions that are disproportionately not engaged in that research process and they're not, they're not getting access to, to those opportunities. As I mentioned, I thought there's many opportunities, and I think it's foremost is to be able to connect regions and researchers who are doing clinical research together across the country to learn and benefit from one another, from their expertise and to share that expertise, and to build capacity for trials, research. And when I talk about, it's a clinical trials network, when everyone says, well, what do you mean by clinical trials? And we're not just talking about randomized clinical trials. I think that's clear that we need the full spectrum of research to be able to address the, the needs in this field. And that means that there's discovery research right through to implementation science research that is going to be really focused on developing and evaluating interventions that can have impact on health outcomes for people living with and or at risk for HIV and STBBIs. And with the ultimate aim of being able to change policy to sustain those interventions that turn out to be effective. So how does this play out now in terms of the new network in, in Atlantic Canada? Well, we do have an Atlantic regional team, which is being built, and I see Peter Daley sitting in the front, and many members of the panel here are part of that team, including Lisa, Debbie, and Gerard, and also Dan Smythe from New Brunswick and John Law, who I can't see, but I'm sure has been out there, I've seen him all week. And really, it's, it's being built. So this is the opportunity, and I think a call out for anybody who's here from the Atlantic region who wants to be involved in that building, because it's the time is to think about how this team will function, how, what will be the priorities in that team, what is the, what will be the primary research focuses, and how do you engage all the stakeholders that are going to be necessary to make that team effective. There's also a Phase II granting opportunity that CCHR has released in relationship to the regional teams, which are really around training and capacity building outside and beyond the postdoctoral fellowship funding opportunities. So lots of opportunities. And I want to make sure we have some time for questions. Just to say, what does, what does CTN provide in addition to making a space for these regions to develop? We will support, we don't have money to fund research, which I think is often misunderstood by many people. We do have money for infrastructure, and that infrastructure actually is quite important because you cannot conduct trials well without it. That includes a methodologic think tank that's been established, which actually now has people within it with methodologic expertise from clinical trials on EDI, implementation science, qualitative studies. And we have helped into, you know, with trials that come to CTN for support with data safety monitoring, monitoring, project management, and knowledge mobilization. So all of those are added values. So I think we've heard a lot about some of the challenges in this region with the four provinces and the need to, remote and rural and urban issues, the lack of capacity in certain areas. But I also think there's a positive opportunity for what's developed in this region to help inform other parts of Canada, and that's one of the added values of a network in that lessons learned here could be shared with other regions who are facing very similar challenge, in particularly the prairies, but lots of other regions outside urban centers in this country. And I'm very excited to have the opportunity to work with this team, and I hope to be able to come visit often. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Marina. So again, a big thanks to our presenters. And now the floor for the next five minutes is, is open. So if you've got questions for any one of our presenters or observations you'd like to share, please go ahead. And just so you know, right after this session, there will be the awards for the new investigators, so please don't dash away. We'll be closing formally at 11:30. This session finishes at 11:15, so please do stick around. And we see Adrian is at the mic, so over to you, please, Adrian.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. That was wonderful. It's a shame it was the last day, I agree. As you were talking, I was struck, the similarities, the problems you're facing with problems I have in a program I run as well. I run a province-wide program in Ontario for HIV-positive young people, most born with HIV and then going through transition pediatric care to adult care. And we found that they were isolated, spread all over the province, that there was no information on them because they're, if they are recorded, they're recorded as a subset of their parents' file, they don't have their own files, and that they are, they're spread apart and they're isolated and alone, and they fall out of care, and they don't follow up. And so the program was created through peer-based interventions and ultimately empowering young people living with HIV to reach out to other young people, to work as, we matched them as clinic buddies and medication buddies, so they would stay on meds and stuff like that. But in terms of reaching those populations, indigenous people in the north of Ontario, new immigrants, refugees, so forth, it took us a long time, but someone comes into the country, is diagnosed positive and is under the age of 30, they're linked to our program and on treatment within four days. And that's, that work comes from peer work. And some question is, how many of your programs or your planned programs or future programs will incorporate peer-based interventions? As Michael clearly said, he knows people because he knows people, because he's part of that community. And when you, when you invest time and money into the PHAs, they will deliver. And so I'm curious to know where the peers fall in your plans.
Thanks, Adrian, for that provocative question. So who would like to jump in with that one?
Yeah, thanks, Adrian. Unfortunately, we, up to this point, we have not been able to develop peer-based programs while we, while we have them in our program. Planning is finding the, the money to, to support them. So what we, what we are doing at, at the moment, while we are searching for, for funding to, to support peer-based programming, we basically have realigned our program that our HIV or STBBI worker actually goes out and works in other community-based organizations that are servicing the variety of populations that, or the target populations that are under our, that we're trying to reach. So, for example, this, the HIV worker or the STBBI worker spends a half-day, a week with five different organizations providing services and trying to build up that peer base. So we're hoping that by doing this, by going to, by going out and meeting people where they are at, and help develop these programs within already other existing programs that are providing services to these populations, we hope that we'll be in a better place that when we do receive funding, we'll be able to put the programs in place quickly.
Thanks, Gerard. So we're, we're just about out of time, so, Michael, last word to you, please.
Okay, I just wanted to add to that because one of the big things I've sat at a lot of boards within my communities is, we always get asked at the end of the conversation, and so it's sort of like, we've already built up this, and we've already have our, our framework in place. I think I would encourage everybody to start the conversation with people that are, that need to be involved at the start of it. Build your framework with them, because what usually happens is by the time it gets to the communities, it no longer is what we need, so we just push back. So if you, when you start stuff like that, get them at the table at the very start, not partway through.
Right.
And I've heard that every time.
Thanks, Michael. Appreciate that. So we, very, very briefly, you've got 30 seconds, Lisa.
So I just want to make sure it's clear, Dr. Gehagen organized or put this forward as, as a construct, and you have done work in this, in this area and region and for years and years and years. You know, you've got to be a barnacle to hang on in Atlantic Canada sometimes, and you've not, you've not been a barnacle, you've been a leader. But my point on this is, you know, having a voice is not enough. People in these situations are contributors, and I most certainly hope that when we are developing this team now, because we have that ability from CCHR and the way this is structured, a voice isn't enough. You're a contributor, and you've done that all along, and I think have been an excellent example of that. And I hope whatever team we put together here, this is not a set of voices, but true contributors. So I hope that's where we head, and thank you for your work.
Thanks again to all of our presenters. Thank you for being here. Please don't go away. We are doing the final wrap-up. You will be done by 11:30, so don't disappear. I really appreciate people staying for the new investigator award recipients. It's a big deal in their career trajectory, so please don't disappear. And thank you again to Kar for holding this conference back here in Halifax after 22 years.